Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board of June on June tenth, twenty twenty five, to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of the body are posted at City Hall, Seventy-eight Beard Street, New Brunswick. Role call?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jackwest. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Adorno. We have a prayer.
Please stand for the classroom. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A reminder, the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, beginning at seven P. M. at New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. Okay, at this time, presentation.
Good evening. Tonight I will be presenting the Access for ELLs and Alternate Access results from the Spring 2025 Administration. I will be reporting the performance levels, the student participation, the assessment results, as well as the intervention strategies for both of these assessments. Access for ELLs stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State for English Language Learners. All multilingual learners are required to take this assessment. There are six proficiency levels that delineate the English language acquisition students are able to demonstrate, from Level One that's entering up to Level Six that's considered reaching. Overall, three thousand eighty students were administered the access. This table represents the total population of multilingual learners tested with the percentage of students who scored at each of the proficiency levels in grades K to twelve. Students in kindergarten have the greatest percentage of students at Level One with sixty-six point one percent, considered entering, and students in grade twelve following with forty-three point eight percent at Level One. Students in grades two, three, seven, and eight have the greatest percentage of students at Level Three, which is considered developing. Students in grades four and five had the greatest percent of students at Level Four, considered expanding. And percentages at Level Five and Six will always remain lower since students no longer participate in access testing once they score a four point five or higher. This table represents the subgroup data for Spring 2025 Access English Language Proficiency. Given that the total number of Hispanic students tested is three thousand fifty-two, the Hispanic proficiency levels closely mirror that of the total students tested. The Black or African-American subgroup has the highest percentage of students at Level Three, developing with a sixty-six point seven percent. The white subgroup had the greatest percentage of students at Level Four, expanding with twenty-one point four percent, and Level Five, considered bridging with a seven point one percent. The ability diverse and economically disadvantaged subgroups performed at approximately the same level as the district. These are the intervention strategies we're implementing with our multilingual learners to address the data. We're implementing a summer program for MLs in grades three to twelve with a focus on newcomer students and ESL interventions. We've provided identified Level Four multilingual learners who have more than seven years in a bilingual program with targeted intervention support, focusing on the expressive mode of communication. We are also providing WIN supports, which is an intervention to strengthen student reading and writing skills for students in grades three to eight. We also are going to provide Level Three and Four students in grades K to twelve with an after-school program focusing on writing skills to enhance their academic writing abilities. And then we will continue with an ESL pull-out model for grades three to five daily in addition to the eighty-minute ELA block students are engaging in. And lastly, we're implementing a new dual-language immersion program in selected kindergarten classrooms, specifically preschools in the district. These are the focus standards by grade bands. You see here, grade bands two, three, and four, five, with an emphasis on interpretive and expressive modes of communication. And here you see the focus of grade bands six to eight and nine to twelve, again with a focus on expressive and interpretive modes of communication. The second assessment I will be reporting out is the Alternate Access for ELLs. It stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. This assessment uses five proficiency levels that delineate the English language acquisition students are able to demonstrate, starting from Level One entering to Level Five bridging. Twenty-four students in grades K to twelve participated in the Alternate Access. There was one hundred percent participation. Because only twenty-four students were tested, we combined the number of students at each grade level for each proficiency level to protect student confidentiality. Fifty percent of students were Level One entering, and twelve point five percent of students were Level Two emerging. Twenty point eight percent of students were Level Three developing, and twelve point five of students were Level Four expanding. The smallest percentage of students was four point two percent at Level Five, considered bridging. And these are the intervention strategies that we're implementing for this population of students who are both identified as a multilingual learner as well as having a significant learning disability. We'll be implementing small group reading instruction with audio support and a focus on the universal design for learning. We're also going to provide, develop the ability to communicate and engage in curriculum and everyday activities through assistive technologies for students who are considered nonverbal. And also, lastly, develop foundational vocabulary through explicit instruction in multiple content areas to enhance both the oral and written communication.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill. At this time, we'll be focusing on Woodrow Wilson School renaming, Ms. Sevilla.
Thank you so much. Good evening. As a follow-up to our last board meeting regarding the naming of Woodrow Wilson, I would like to provide an update on the process. Over the last few years, we have engaged in discussions about this particular topic, and most recently, the Board took formal action to move forward with renaming Woodrow Wilson School. Board Policy seven-two-five-zero permits naming of a school or naming a school in honor of an elite individual who has provided outstanding service to the district or community or selecting a name that reflects a theme representing our shared values and traditions. The nomination period for the new name ran from July twenty-first to August fourth, twenty twenty-five. During this time, and I'll share three bullet points. A hundred and forty-two submissions were received, and those came from staff, families, students, alumni, and community members. The submissions represented forty-eight distinct names, of which thirty of them met policy criteria. Eligible names reflected or reflect, rather, a diverse range on a rees, including educators, civil rights leaders, community advocates, and individuals recognized for public service and philanthropy, as well as geographic references. We sincerely thank all who participated in the process. The top three nominations, based on the number of submissions, are: Robert J. Boiler, a New Brunswick High School graduate and New Brunswick Public Schools educator for forty-eight years, and former principal of Woodrow Wilson Elementary School. He's remembered as a dedicated mentor and leader who guided Woodrow Wilson to achieve full ribbon status. Next, we have William L. Dunbar, MBA chess on a New Brunswick High School English teacher who sponsored historic and black college university tours, taught African-American history and public speaking. He's widely respected by students, staff, civil leaders for his mentorship and commitment to college readiness. And next, we have Dr. C. Roy Epps, founder of the Civic League and formal Board of Education member. He championed after-school programs and equity initiatives, and is recognized for his leadership in civil rights, community, and community engagement. At this time, the Facility Committee is recommending Robert J. Boiler or Dr. C. Roy Epps for further consideration during our closed session. The Board of Education is now ready to accept public comments on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Sevilla. I did receive in advance two sign-ups for this public comments portion of tonight's board meeting, beginning with Mr. Michael Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse my voice a little hoarse tonight. But I rose to first thank all of you for the space to speak in regards to renaming of Woodrow Wilson. I'm Mike Mitchell, as you heard, and I'm a district employee and former resident of New Brunswick. Most importantly, I'm a graduate and New Brunswick High School alumnus. I was very pleased the candidates in final standing in the process. Mr. Boiler, Mr. Dunbar, and Dr. Epps were all icons in their own right and should, by right, be considered for such an honor posthumously. I want to offer my support for the Renée of Woodrow Wilson as a Robert J. Boiler community school in honor of this great academic leader. His reputation stretched beyond the walls of Woodrow Wilson School during his days as the administrator in that building. I was never a student of his, yet I heard nothing but great things about him during that time, and especially during my earlier years in my return to district as an employee. There's so much more I can say, but I believe there are others here who can and will to just let see even more justice. Thank you for your time and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next up, we have Mr. Douglas Boiler.
Thank you. First, it's just such an honor for just being considered. But I think my dad's story is valid, at least now. My dad started teaching in New Brunswick, teaching with the whole. He wanted to see kids learn, grow, earn a diploma, and be successful in life. He needs satisfaction knowing that it molded many young lives, no matter who they were, where they were from, or what their background was. He also loved coaching. Coaching enabled him to form really close relationships with kids, relationships that lasted long and forgive and tire. And being a principal brought him into contact with many teachers that he could work with and mentor, to guide kids and give them a safer learning environment. Together, they made kids want to go to school, and he accomplished all this in a talent he grew up and loved. My dad worked with the New Brunswick school system for six different decades, starting in the forties. We started in first grade, and all the way from high school, we played football and baseball better than both and graduated in nineteen fifty-five. During his time at the high school, he had many influential mentors, some of whom helped him get into college on a football scholarship. When in college, he made a teaching choice he made, the most influential he had received from teachers and coaches who were part of his early life. After graduating college, he returned to the city he loved. And began a teaching career in special education at Roosevelt School and also coached football and baseball. After a period that was about, he transferred to Red Shaw Middle School. While there, he emphasized his leadership skills and was encouraged to go back to school to get his masters. Once he got his masters, he immediately displaced in the position as Assistant Vice Principal at Red Shaw Middle School. In nineteen seventy, he was transferred to a high school in the same position in there because barely a straight firm and a caring leadership person. In nineteen seventy-two, he was appointed Vice Principal, and in nineteen seventy-five, he was offered a principal's position, which he took willingly and remained there until nineteen eighty-three. After experiencing stress-related health issues, he was decided to place in charge of an experiment school down the old Bader Street School. It was called the Alternative School. It was for troubled kids in town here. He really loved that job. He went back to his roots and he was able to give students individual attention. After three years there, he was asked to take a position at Woodrow Wilson, which he accepted. He loved that job also. That was a dream job. He loved the teachers, then the students, and they loved him back. Loved the parents, who appreciated his dedication and emphasis on learning and his push for advancement in college. While there, he laid the foundation for work that would lead Woodrow Wilson to a full ribbon school. Dad retired in nineteen ninety-eight, kept an over thirty-eight-year career and did the Bronx Board's public school system. He retired with a lot of fond memories and knowledge that he served the town that he loved so much. The countless students that passed through his hands and the lives he influenced is immeasurable. My son works at McKenna's School. And when my dad passed away this summer, he got a bunch of condolences, and one of them, like, really kind of stuck out, and said that, "Your grandfather was responsible for the time when our city was at its best. He wasn't just a principal, but a leader of the community. We saw him as father-father, someone who we could turn to and someone who wouldn't judge us. He just wanted to make sure we were all ready. He was like a father to so many. You're very lucky to learn from someone like that." Sorry, I'm passing my time. But I'll finish with quick. That was one of the cities of them. Local youth returns to college and gets back to the city he loves for thirty-eight years. Was a student, an athlete, a teacher, a coach, assistant vice principal, a vice principal, and a principal in three different schools. And I know, just like the rest of my family here, that our father, grandfather, mom's husband, Robert J. Boiler, he was a senior at any age. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Boiler. At this time, the Board will welcome anyone else who would like to share public comments on the renaming of Woodrow Wilson Elementary School. Madam Vice President, it seems that there are no additional public comments.
Thank you. Thank you to all again for your comments on renaming of Woodrow Wilson School. We will be making a decision, discussing this in a closed session. Again, once again, thank you for your comments. At this time, we move on to minutes. Can I get a motion?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jackwest. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion approved.
At this time, can we move on to the Superintendent's Report? Dr. Johnson?
Thank you. Good evening. As of August twenty twenty-five, we've enrolled eight thousand...
Noted, Mr. Spencer.
As of August twenty twenty-five, we've enrolled eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two students. Our summer programs have successfully wrapped up, and I want to thank our staff for their dedication and our students for their hard work. Together, they made this summer a valuable and enriching experience that we are proud to build upon as we begin the new school year. Today marked the start of our administrators retreat, which is a bunch of professional learning sessions which will continue over the next few days. These sessions are designed to strengthen leadership practices, deepen instructional focus, and ensure alignment with our district goals, setting a strong foundation for the year ahead. We are wrapping up and we're putting our final touches on preparations for the new school year, and we eagerly look forward to welcoming everyone back. Teachers and support staff return on September second, with a district-wide professional development day on September third, and our students' first day will be on September fourth. Again, I've said this many times, I'm very grateful for our staff, for the families, for our community, parents, and everyone for their continued commitment. Together, we are ready to launch a successful school year which keeps students at the center of every decision we make. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. At this time, we have the Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Spencer?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
We just need a motion.
We need a motion to approve the Superintendent's Report.
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jackwest. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we move on to the Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, the Facility Committee met. The list of the summer school facility projects? Some of the projects took a little bit more time, but they were completed. We had the full H-Fact replacement at Pathways Campus, the new science labs at Pathways Middle School and our high school, camera upgrades at Middle School, Lord Sterling, and Pathways Campus, lot cleaning and demolition on the new parking lot at one thirty-five Lee Avenue. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Athletic Committee Report, Ms. Caldwell?
Good evening. The fall athletic season is officially underway. Football and girls tennis began competition last week, while girls volleyball, soccer, cross-country, cheerleading, and esports held their first official practices yesterday. Middle school sports will begin on September eighth with tryouts for boys and girls soccer starting on August twenty-sixth. To date, we have four hundred and ten registrations at the high school level and a hundred and forty-seven at the middle school level. Our continued goal is to expand student participation in athletics each year. Summer programming was a tremendous success. Many of our teams engaged in summer leagues and tournaments to prepare for the upcoming season. The Runz with Boys and Girls Basketball hosted five schools four days a week over six weeks with three games played every evening. The event was well-attended and highly competitive. In addition, boys and girls soccer, girls volleyball, football, and wrestling all competed against schools from across the state, gaining valuable experience heading into the fall. Our Play It Smart program continues to make a strong impact by supporting student athletes with academic eligibility, graduation readiness, and college preparation. The program has also expanded community service opportunities, encouraging athletes to give back to the city. Facility members have signed up as tutors at both the middle school and high school, with tutoring beginning September eighth at the middle school and September fifteenth at the high school. Finally, registration remains open until September fifth for high school athletics and September twelfth for middle school athletics. May I have a motion to approve the bank reconciliation report?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jackwest. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, we have the Curriculum and Policy Committee Report. Ms. Haukis?
Thank you so much. The Curriculum and Policy Committee met on August thirteenth, where Mrs. Hill presented the Spring 2025 Access and Alternate Access Board that she just presented this evening. We also covered the NJCUSAC placement scores. In September of two thousand twenty-three, the department issued a placement letter to the New Brunswick School District on the results of the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, the NJCUSAC evaluation. At that time, the district was placed on the continuum in each of the five performance evaluation areas in the district performance review: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel. Following the initial evaluation, the district developed a district improvement plan to address all noncompliant areas identified as less than eighty percent. The DIF was approved on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, for Instruction and Program. Staff from the Middlesex County Office of Education conducted an interim review of the district's progress in the areas identified in the DIF. The initial review placement and interim review placement scores for the district are as follows. So, these are the CUSAC areas. For Instruction and Program, the placement as of July twenty twenty-five is at seventy-five percent. Fiscal Management is at a hundred percent. Governance at ninety-five percent. Operations at ninety-five percent. Personnel at one hundred percent. All the resolutions that the committee reviewed are on the resolution... All the resolutions are on the consent agenda. The policies and regulations that we covered were the revision of Policy two-four-one-one, Guidance Counseling. The revisions in the Policy Guide two-four-one-one provides some additional details regarding student access to adequate counseling services. A new policy was five-three-three-nine-point-one, Student Sun Protection. On March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, the New Jersey Statute for Student Sun Protection Policy was adopted, requiring school districts to develop and adopt a policy concerning the student's use of sunscreen and sun-protective clothing while outdoors at school and school-sponsored functions. The Policy Guide is mandated and requires everyone to adopt a policy addressing the requirements in the new law. The policy that was abolished was one-six-four-eight-point-one-five. record-keeping for healthcare settings in school buildings, COVID-nineteen. The United States Department of Labor Occupational Safety and Health Administration, more commonly known as OSHA, recently placed an enforcement stay on the COVID-nineteen record-keeping and reporting requirements. The New Jersey Department of Health, Department of Occupational Health confirmed that the New Jersey, that the state of New Jersey would no longer be enforcing these record-keeping and reporting requirements for COVID-nineteen. Therefore, policy guide one six four eight point one five should be abolished by districts, but it is no longer in effect. That concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we have the committee report for student support services. Ms. Sevilla?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Student Support Services Committee met in August and would like to report on the following. We will continue to meet throughout the upcoming school year for our special education parent advisory group meetings, which will take place at Holroson Community School of the Arts at five thirty PM on the following dates. October tenth, December twelfth, so ten-ten, twelve-twelve, January thirtieth, uh, February the twentieth, March twenty-seventh, and then May twenty-second. So ten-ten, twelve-twelve, one-thirty, two-twenty, three-twenty-seven, and five-twenty-second. Additionally, we are pleased to share that we will continue offering families and the school community training in mental health awareness, emotional regulation, and tension reduction strategies. The dates for these sessions will be announced in the near future, so we will be, um, providing that information soon, so. Be on the lookout for those trainings, so that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sevilla. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. Do we have anyone, Mr. Renia?
Yes, Madam Vice President, we have one sign up this evening, and that is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you.
It does not look like Mr. Cradaville is present this evening, so that would conclude our public comments for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to the finance committee report.
Yes, we need a motion to approve the August nineteenth finance committee report. Can we get a second?
Yes, we will get to that in a turn, yes.
Did I give her first a motion? Okay, thank you. Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Jack West? Ms. Ortiz? Ms. Sevilla? Page eleven noted. Mr. Spencer? Ms. Marilla? I'm sorry, she's not here. Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, at this time, we move on to the President's report. So, um, once again, thank you to all who came, um, to the meeting this evening for and gave the comments in regards to the renaming of the school. As we look at as well to the school year beginning, um, we took a look at August's National Self-Awareness Month. Taking care of yourself starts with knowing what your mind and body need. As we come into the school year, prioritize your sleep. Continue prioritizing your sleep. Rest is fuel for your brain and body. Stay hydrated, keep your energy, and focus strong. And this is for all students and for parents and teachers and staff. And when you're feeling fearful, worried, or stuck, just remember you are amazing. You are so much stronger, so much capable than you may feel in this moment. If you don't believe me, just look at all you've accomplished. And remind yourself you are empowered. You may fall, you may break, you may fail, but then you rise, you heal, you overcome, and you inspire others. That's it for the President's report. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA-
I'm sorry, we will need a motion on the consent agenda?
I apologize, sorry. Uh, can we get a motion on the consent agenda?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jack West. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Can you repeat that, please? Item E, resolution E noted. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Resolution for a closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA ten four six, provides the certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session. And whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the A for said subjects shall be discussed in closed session by the Board of Education and administrative staff. And the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act no longer exist.
Can we have a motion?
Just a moment. And we're adding a third, school renaming.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to go into closed session? Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jack West. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
I have a personnel committee report. Ms. Ortiz?
Yes, thank you. The New Brunswick Board of Education approves the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five personnel report as is.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion? Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jack West. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Page nineteen noted. Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, the resolution. The New Brunswick Board of Education hereby approves the renaming of Woodrow Wilson School to Robert J. Boiler Elementary School. And DOE approved.
Can we please have a motion? Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jack West. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion approved.
If there's any member from the family that wanted to just come up and shake the boy president's hand or whatever, please.
The logo.
Can we get the logo?
Okay, can I get a motion? To adjourn. Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jack West. Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Needing adjourn.